Okay, we'll go ahead and get started, everybody. I will now call to order the meeting of the Omaha Planning Board. The Planning Board members that are here today are Sidney Franklin, Jeff Moore, Patrick Morris, Michael Pate, Jorge Sotolongo, Dave Rosacker, Vice Chair, and I am Greg Rosenbaum, Chairman. Members of the city staff that are in attendance today are Dave Fanslaw, Planning Director, Eric England, Assistant Planning Director, Mike Carter, current Planning Manager, Robert LaRocco, Planning Board Administrator, Jennifer Taylor of the City Law Department, and Lisa Agins, our Recording Secretary. Our rules of procedure are as follows. Notice of this hearing has been published. Copies of today's agenda are located on the table in front of us. You are welcome to come down and pick one up. The cases on the consent agenda will be heard first. Consent cases have been recommended for layover... Excuse me. Consent cases have been recommended for layover or approval have already been heard or perceived by the Planning Board to be non-controversial, therefore will be read and voted on without the opportunity for your testimony. If you wish to testify, you may remove the case from the consent agenda. When each consent case is read, I will ask if anyone wants the case removed. If you do, please stand up and say so, and the case will be removed. This case will then be heard in the order in which it appears on the regular agenda after we go through the consent cases. When the case is heard, you will have the opportunity to come to the podium, clearly state your name and address, and give your testimony at that time. When hearing cases on the regular agenda, the Board will first hear from the applicant. After the applicant states their case, we will hear from the proponents, and then we will hear from the opponents. After both sides are heard, the public hearing will be closed, and no additional testimony will be permitted unless a Board member requests additional information. When at the podium, please clearly state your name, address, and whom you are representing for the record. Your testimony is very important to us. In the interest of time and courtesy to others, please be short and to the point. We will try to limit each case to 10 minutes. Those directly involved in the case, please speak first. We request that large groups select a spokesperson to represent that group, therefore eliminating repetitive testimony. When giving testimony, please provide new information and try not to repeat what has been previously said. We do ask that all speakers and others be treated with courtesy and with respect. In that regard, please remain silent while seated, and please turn off your cell phones. Our decision to approve, deny, or continue a case made here today will be forwarded to the City Council for another public hearing and final disposition by the City Council. Conditional use permits are an exception to this rule. The Board's decision made here today on conditional use permits are final and not forwarded to the City Council. Lastly, upon the advice of the Law Department, all communications to Board members from attorneys or other interested parties should be transmitted through the Planning Department so that they are made a part of the public record. The Department will then transmit all that information to the Board as well as to the rest of the public. A current copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act can be found in a white binder in this room, and there are no changes to the consent agenda. I will get started with that. Before I do, I just wanted to say that our Recording Secretary, Lisa Agins, this is her last meeting with the Planning Board. I'd like to thank you, Lisa, for all your work and all your dedication to your job, and best wishes at your new job.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll get started with the consent cases. Again, I will ask if anyone wants it removed. If you do, please stand up and say so. Agenda item number five, case C-8-21-231. Applicant: Gru Sean McMiller. It is on for approval. Request: Approval of a special use permit to allow transitional living in the G.C. District. This was laid over from the August meeting. Location: 701 South 75th Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number six, case C-7-21-122. Applicant: Bob Purcell, J.T.B.L.L.C. It is on for layover. Request: Approval of a conditional use permit to allow indoor sports and recreation in the C.C. District. This was laid over from the May meeting. Location: 20320 Belondo Parkway. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number 10, case C-3-21-240. Applicant: Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha. It is on for approval. Request: Approval of the disposition of city-owned property under community development law to the Omaha Housing Authority as allowed by Nebraska State Law. Location: 3030 and 3031 Upland Parkway. Anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Agenda item number 11, case C-3-21-241. Applicant: Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha. It is on for approval. Request: Approval of the disposition of city-owned property to an interested party. Location: Southwest of Ninth and Homer Streets. Anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Agenda item number 13, case C-12-21-244. Applicant: Mark and Judith Smith. It is on for layover. Request: Preliminary and final plat approval of Smithville, a subdivision outside city limits with a waiver to Section 5399 sidewalks. Location: Southeast of 72nd Street and Dutch Hall Road. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Agenda item number 14, case C-12-21-246. Applicant: S.R.E. Development. It is on for approval. Request: Preliminary plat approval of Emmanuel Lakeside, a cluster subdivision inside city limits with waivers to Section 5399 sidewalks, 5311 C1 roadway width, and Section 5382G cul-de-sac width. Location: Southeast of 177th and Francis Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number 15, case C-10-21-222. C-10-21-263. Applicant: Dan Rudolph. It is on for approval. Request: Rezoning from C.C. and G.C. to C.C. with approval of the M.C.C., Major Commercial Corridor Overlay District. Location: 8910 and 8920 Fort Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Agenda item number 16, case C-10-21-247. Applicant: O'Keefe Lofts, L.L.C. It is on for approval. Request: Rezoning from D.S. to CBD. Property is located within an A.C.I. 1 overlay district. Location: 1402 Jones Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number 17, case C-10-21-248. Applicant: Ron Hackett. It is on for approval. Request: Rezoning from D.S. to CBD. Property is located within an A.C.I. 1 overlay district. Location: 906 and 910 North 16th Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Agenda item number 18, case C-11-21-249. C-10-21-250. Applicant: Grace Longley. It is on for approval. Request: Rezoning from G.I. to R5 with approval of a P.U.R. overlay district. Location: 2014 and 2016 Pierce Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number 19, case C-10-21-251. C-10-21-252. Applicant: Creighton University. It is on for approval. Request: Rezoning from G.O. and G.I. to D.S. along with approval of the A.C.I. 1 overlay district. Location: Southeast of 27th and Cummings Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Agenda item number 21, case C-11-21-245. Applicant: S.R.E. Development. It is on for approval. Request: Approval of a P.U.D. Plan Unit Development Overlay District. Location: Southeast of 177th and Francis Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Agenda item number 22, case C-8-21-254. Applicant: Carthal Sherrell. It is on for approval. Request: Approval of a special use permit to allow small group living, non-disabled, in the R435 District. Location: 2118 Grand Avenue. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number 23, case C-8-21-255. Applicant: Ron Hackett. It is on for approval. Request: Approval of a special use permit to allow a restaurant, drive-in, in the G.I. District. Property is located with an A.C.I. 2 overlay district. Location: 4416 Dodge Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Agenda item number 24, case C-8-21-256. Applicant: Kenneth Ducat. It is on for approval. Request: Approval of a special use permit to allow custom manufacturing in the C.C. District. Portions of the property are located within a Flood Fringe Overlay District. Location: 20343 Belondo Parkway. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number 25, case C-8-21-257. Applicant: Nebraska Youth Justice Initiative. It is on for approval. Request: Approval of a special use permit to allow recreational club in the R1 District. Location: 5020 Grand Ave. Anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. I think that's the end of them. Yes. Do we have a motion for the consent items that are on for approval?
Motion to approve. Number five, 10, 11, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 21, 22, 23, 24, and 25.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you please record the vote?
Rosacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Okay, do we have a motion for the consent items that are on for layover?
Motion to layover cases six and 13.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you please record the vote?
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Okay, if you were here for one of those cases, they're voted on, there will be no further action taken today. You can remain, or you are free to leave if you choose to do so. Thanks for coming down. The first four cases on the agenda are administrative only, therefore there will be no opportunity for public testimony. We'll get started with agenda item number one, case C-10-21-101. Applicant: Celebrity Homes Omaha. Request: Final plat approval of Majestic 178 lots 1 through 98, outlots A through C, a subdivision outside city limits with rezoning from A.G. to R4. Location: Southeast of 177th and State Streets. Eric.
Yeah, so the Board saw Majestic 178, the final plat actually back in July, which was for the entirety of this site, which included 204 single-family lots. However, before proceeding to City Council, the applicant decided to pursue splitting it up into two phases. So, the first phase, final plat, is back before the Board. This would plat 98 single-family lots, three outlots, within a little bit less than 25 acres. It's providing for a stub street for remnant properties adjacent to it, if those ever are to develop. Little bit further coordination regarding grades and park. The staff is recommending approval of the rezoning from A.G. to R4. Approval of the final plat of Majestic 178, subject to submittal of an acceptable final subdivision agreement prior to City Council.
Any comments or questions from the Board? Do we have a motion?
I motion for approval of the rezoning from A.G. to R4 and approval of the final plat of Majestic 178, lots 1 through 98, outlots A through C, subject to submittal of an acceptable subdivision agreement prior to forwarding this to City Council.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you please record the vote?
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Agenda item number two, case C-10-21-7. C-12-21-8. Applicant: Lockwood Development. Request: Final plat approval of Iron Bluff, a subdivision outside city limits with rezoning from A.G. to R4, R5, R7, and MU. Location: Southwest of 204th and F Streets. Eric.
Yeah, so this would final plat, the Iron Bluff subdivision, which is 117 lots. There's a single-family residential component on the western portion, and then as well as some mixed-use and multifamily lots for the remainder in that area closer to 204th and F intersection. The final traffic study is currently under review with Public Works, so there will have to be concurrence with both state and Nebraska, 204th Street being a state highway, as well as Public Works on a few items, so that'll need to be wrapped up before proceeding to City Council. One of those is making sure that there is an acceptable distance for the roundabout at approximately 205th Street, as well as some components as far as street paving and roundabout on the southwest portion of the site. There are a few mixed-use items that'll also need to be finalized with the final draft or before the final accepted agreement proceeds to City Council. Nothing specific that I need to point out here, just a few cleanup items. Staff recommends approval of the rezoning from A.G. to R4, R5, R7, and MU, subject to submittal of an acceptable mixed-use development agreement, and approval of the final plat, subject to addressing the four conditions in the recommendation report prior to forwarding the request to City Council.
Okay, any comments, questions from the Board? Do we have a motion?
I move approval of the rezoning from A.G. to R4, R5, R7, and MU, subject to submittal of an acceptable mixed-use development agreement, and approval of the final plat, subject to addressing the four conditions outlined in the report prior to forwarding the request onto City Council for final action.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you please record the vote?
Morris?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Agenda item number three, case C-10-16-261. Applicant: K.M.S. 168 LLC. Request: Final plat approval of Summer Hill Farm lots 161 through 171, outlots L through N, a subdivision outside city limits with rezoning from A.G. to R4. Location: Southeast of 168 and State Streets. Eric.
Yeah, so this is a second phase. It only plats 11 lots, but it is the remainder of the site of the Summer Hill Farm project. Most of the site was final-platted back in September of 2018. This second small phase has come before you because Douglas County is preparing for construction plans of the 168th and State Street intersection. There would be some major grade improvements and requirements that are a part of that, so this final plat is... will need that construction to concur or work coincide with that construction of the improvements. I don't believe there's anything else I specifically need to point out, but if you do have questions because it has been some time, just let me know. Staff recommends approval of the rezoning from A.G. to R4. Approval of the final plat of Summer Hill Farm, subject to addressing the three conditions in the recommendation report prior to City Council.
Any comments or questions? Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve the rezoning from A.G. to R4, and approval of the final plat of Summer Hill Farm, subject to addressing the three conditions in the staff report prior to forwarding the request to the City Council for final action.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you please record the vote?
Pate?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Agenda item number four, case C-10-21-209. C-12-21-210. Applicant: Westwood Solutions LLC. Request: Final plat approval of State and Highway 133 addition, lots 1 and 2, outlots A and B, formerly State and Highway 133 addition. A subdivision outside city limits with rezoning from A.G. to G.I. Location: Northwest of Blair High Road and State Street. Eric.
Yeah, so you just saw this preliminary plat one month ago, so this is a very quick turnaround, but this is the final plat of the first phase of this project on the northwest corner of Blair High Road and State Street. The applicant has been working diligently with city staff and addressing all the items that need to be wrapped up, including the final subdivision agreement and development I think that's all I need to point out. Staff recommends approval of the rezoning from A.G. to G.I. Approval of the final plat, subject to addressing the five conditions in the recommendation report prior to forwarding to City Council.
Any comments or questions? Do we have a motion?
I move for approval of the rezoning from A.G. to G.I. And approval of the final plat, subject to addressing the following conditions prior to forwarding the request to City Council for final action.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you please record the vote?
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Okay, that ends the administrative part of the meeting. We'll now go on to the public part of the meeting for public testimony. Agenda item number seven, case C-3-21-237. Applicant: Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha. Request: Approval of the Habitat for Humanity and Neighborhood Action and Fact 9 TIF redevelopment project plan. Location: An area generally bound by Pinkney Street on the north, Wirt Street on the south, 24th Street on the east, and 29th Street on the west. And Bridget, you're presenting.
Good afternoon, Bridget Hadley, City Planning. I realize this visual is not very easy to read, but before you is another TIF redevelopment project plan presented by the Habitat for Humanity in the Neighborhood Action and Fact Neighborhood. This is Habitat's ninth project, TIF project, so that's the reason for the number nine. This square, I think you can see a little bit better. So, this is 24th Street, to give some bearings. This is Pinkney Street, Benny Street here, Wirt, Highway 75 North, or Highway 75. And then they have some parcels that are also a part of this project, which are right in this area. Spalding Street, North 28th, Pratt Street, and then North 29th are the boundaries of those parcels. So, that map basically shows an aerial, and then also maybe a part of your packet, I know it's a part of the Part 1 of the application that's online. This is another map that kind of shows the actual lots that this particular project will involve. So, the blue shaded areas represent the lot. So, this is that larger area in Neighborhood Action and Fact, where this is Pinkney Street, that's Wirt Street, this would be 24th, and this would be the western boundary, and then the properties on the north, the west side of Highway 75. So, again, as I said, this is a single-family affordable housing project, one of the typical models that Holy Name Habitat for Humanity produces. They will be constructing 26 new homes. This will be the second set of homes that they are constructing in this area. Last year, maybe 19 into 20, we approved another project for them to produce 20 single-family homes, so this will be 26. The homes are ranging in around 130,000 to about 140,000 in appraised value, and they're usually three-to-five-bedroom homes. The zoning is applicable. Most of the zoning in that particular neighborhood is R5, some R7, some R8, and Habitat for Humanity knows that if there are any rezonings that need to take place for some of those lots, that they will take care of that. But most of the lots that are part of this project are zoned R5. One of the benefits, because this is an older neighborhood, so one of the benefits of TIF is that it will help to improve the public infrastructure in this neighborhood. So, from improving sidewalks, maybe even putting in new sidewalks, any street repair, new street trees, things like that will happen. And also, because this is an older neighborhood, there will be a lot of site work done, site costs, due to these being vacant lots that have had maybe older homes that were demolished, and maybe the foundations were not excavated. So, again, a typical-type project for Holy Name Housing, but constantly adding more single-family affordable units into the community. So, with that, I will ask for your approval. The TIF committee has met, has given their approval, and Ken Maher with Habitat for Humanity is also here if you have any other questions.
Bridget, I do have a question for you. Now, of these 26 homes, are they all going to be complete? I know the completion is expected to be done by the end of 2022, but do they all have to be constructed and completed?
I believe it's a yes, because this is part of their typical build model, so I believe that is a yes.
Yes, it is.
Yeah, okay. You anticipate any problems completing? Maybe if you wouldn't mind coming up, sir. Name and address.
Hello, Ken Maher, Area Director for Habitat, 1701 North 24th Street.
Yeah, so do you anticipate... I mean, lumber prices have come down, so the construction, price of construction has come down a little bit, but 26 homes in that shorter period of time is a lot of homes.
Right, our standard volume that we build is between 50 and 55 homes a year, so the 26 actually fall within our building season timeline that are already pre-budgeted for 24 months in advance, so.
Okay.
Yep.
So, you're prepared?
Yeah, we have proper overages built into our model, our purchase model as well, so.
Perfect. Thanks, Ken.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, Ken. Any other proponents wishing to speak? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Any additional comments or questions? Eric, did you want to add any?
Recommend approval.
Do we have a motion?
Motion for approval.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you please record the vote?
Rosacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Okay, agenda item number eight, case C-3-21-238. Applicant: Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha. Request: Approval of the Blackstone Square TIF redevelopment project plan. Location: 3863 Farnham Street. And Don, you're up.
Yes, good afternoon, Don Seaton, Omaha City Planning. Blackstone Square is a TIF redevelopment project located at 3863 Farnham Street. I'm drawing the map here. The site had been previously occupied by three apartment buildings. The site had been previously occupied by three apartment buildings that had experienced some fire damage. They are buildings that had been vacant since 2018. The buildings have since been demolished. They'll be replaced with a two-story commercial building. These are the buildings that are now gone. And I have a rendering of the proposed building. Okay, so those buildings will be replaced by a two-story commercial building of about 11,000 square feet. The building is planned to have four tenant bays. Each would have a patio area on the upper level. They're being designed with dining, restaurant uses in mind. The site is zone NBD, Neighborhood Business District, which does not require onsite parking. No onsite parking is proposed. There will be some on-street parking available for the project. They will be doing some curb gutter, sidewalk, and landscaping improvements in the rights of way on both sides of the project, and they will also be making a $15,000 contribution to the Midtown Public Improvement Fund. And there's a lot of uses planned for that fund to do some streetscaping in the Blackstone District, and particularly in this particular area. Property also has ACI zoning, so the applicants are working well with our urban design planners, both the public improvement design and the building design. The developer is Blackstone Real Estate LLC, managed by Christie and Rob Signer. Total project cost is approximately $4.5 million. They are asking for $515,000 in TIF support. The project has been approved by the TIF committee, meets the criteria of our required criteria for our TIF program. It's an appropriate land use for the area, and it complies with the city's master plan goals. We ask for your approval.
Thank you, Don. Parking, it is NBD, but in the packet it talked about, I think, 24 total parking stalls are going to be provided off-site. 16 of them with a lease, with a...
Correct. Yes, yes. They have, well, the owner of this property also owns an adjacent property that will contain some of those, some of those parking stalls, and they have been working on an agreement with another property owner for some onsite parking on that property.
Okay.
I'll let their project representative give you more details and an update on the status of that.
All right. Thank you, Don. Any other proponents wishing to speak?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Brent Beller, 1140 West Center Road, on behalf of Blackstone Real Estate LLC. Quickly, I answer that question. So we, we'll have eight onsite parking spaces, and then the signers own the building next door, so there's an opportunity to use 16 of those spaces. And it's also important to point out, I think the city is undertaking a project for a new parking garage that I think will service most of the Blackstone. So we hope that parking is taken care of with, with all of that. But the, yeah, this is commercial. The things I want to highlight, other than what Don said, is obviously there's a TIF contribution of $15,000. I think oftentimes that's forgotten when these TIF deals come before planning board and city councils, that most applicants contribute part of the TIF funds back to public improvements that serve not these projects, but other projects within the city. Also, 30 to 40 new jobs in, in connection with this project. So, you know, these are always the benefits of TIF when, when we're allowed to do this sort of stuff. So with that, here for any questions. Appreciate your consideration.
Thank you. Any other proponents wishing to speak? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. Additional comments, questions from the board? I, oh, I thought you were, okay. Eric, did you want to add anything?
No, you know, Brent mentioned the, the city garage, so yeah, there is a project just one or two blocks to the east that will have a city garage that will help service the parking needs for Blackstone. Staff recommends approval.
Okay, do we have a motion? Motion to approve. We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you please record the vote?
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Agenda item number nine, case C3-21-239. Applicant, Planning Department, on behalf of the City of Omaha, request approval of the F Street to Big and Little Papillion Creeks Community Redevelopment Area, CRA designation. Location, an area generally bound by F Street on the north, the Little Papillion Creek on the east, the Big Papillion Creek on the south, and 72nd Street on the west. And you're up again, Don.
Okay, yes, Don Seaton, Omaha City Planning, on behalf of this project. We received a request to do a CRA study. CRA is Community Redevelopment Area, and it's for an area near 72nd and J Streets, an industrial area. There is a developer who is interested in redeveloping a vacant parcel in that area, and to do it to the extent and intensity that this developer would like to do, they feel they're going to need TIF, Tax Increment Financing Support. And the primary purpose of designating the CRA as Community Redevelopment Areas is to allow for redevelopments within those areas to use TIF. The map I have up here, all the lavender areas are existing CRA designated areas, and the area we'll be focusing on today is the area in red, which kind of connects, located right between a couple existing CRA areas. Now, under state law, a CRA is, Community Redevelopment Area, is defined as being blighted and substandard, and there is a detailed definition of both of those terms in state law, and they also appear in the CRA report that are in your packet. And for an area to be eligible for CRA designation, it has to comply with both definitions. And to determine that, we use three sources of information. We use demographic data from the U.S. Census Bureau. We use building condition data from the county assessor's database, and then we also do windshield surveys of the area. And we, to begin with, we start with the broader area, and since the state law requires us to use census data, we begin with census geography. And the broader area outlined in black here are two census tracts, 7003 and 71.01. And we found that both census tracts in their entirety complied with the definitions in state law. But some of those areas are already CRA, some of it we don't necessarily want to designate. We don't want to designate more than is necessary. So then we move to two block groups, block group one and block group one within those two census tracts. Narrowed our focus, and we found that both of the block groups are fully eligible for designation as CRA, under the criteria in state law. Ultimately, the area we are recommending, and I'll get into the data in a moment, is even smaller than the block, census block groups. And the boundaries are shown in your packet and are shown on this map here. This is the area in, shaded, that's proposed for designation. Our purpose in kind of restricting the area is to try to pull in as much property as possible that we anticipate may redevelop with jobs and commercial or industrial-type uses, while at the same time excluding established single-family residential areas. And that's kind of how we ended up with the boundaries we have there. Now, I mentioned those two definitions and the criteria. We looked at the census data first, and that's kind of some quantitative or measurable data, and these are the five categories. You only need to meet one of those categories to be eligible, to be considered blighted and comply with Part B of the definition of blighted. Population change, the population has been stable or declining in this area. Per capita income, in general, in those census tracts and block groups, is lower than the city's per capita income overall. The unemployment rates are higher than the city, or pardon me, than 120% of the statewide unemployment rate, and the average age of structures is around 59 to 64 years, depending on the geography, and they only need to exceed 40 years. So that is the measurable criteria, and I met that. Now, in terms of building condition and condition of the infrastructure, it's a little more subjective. It's something we go out and look at with our windshield survey, we look at how the county assessor classifies the building conditions. Out of 77 buildings within, or 77 parcel or sites within this proposed area, only two of them were rated by the county, or graded by the county assessor's office as being good or better. Vast majority of them were average, but there were quite a number of fair buildings as well. So the buildings aren't in terrible shape, but really, a lot of it is metal-skinned pole barn buildings, utilitarian buildings that were built in the, mostly in the 1980s. They're really not the highest and best use of the area, and they are showing a little age. In terms of the condition of the infrastructure, curbs, gutters, and sidewalks are absent in many of the area, many portions of this area. Existing street pavement widths are a bit narrow and, and/or in need of repair, and stormwater drainage facilities are inadequate. So on both the measurable criteria and the qualitative criteria, planning staff found the, this area to be eligible for CRA designation, and we are asking you to make the recommendation that the City Council designate this area as a CRA.
Thank you. Thank you, Don. Any other proponents wishing to speak? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. Comments or questions from the board? Eric, did you want to add?
Just recommend approval.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a sec, a motion and a second. Lisa, will you please record the vote?
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Agenda item number 12, case C10-21-23, C10-21-24, C10-21-3, C12-21-4. Applicant, Lockwood Development, request final plat approval of the Crossroads, a subdivision inside city limits with a waiver to Section 5399 sidewalks, along with rezoning from R1, R8, LC, and GC to GC and MU. Repeal of the MCC overlay district for a portion of the site, approval of the MCC overlay district for a portion of the site, and expansion of the ACI-2 overlay district for a portion of the site. Location, northwest of 72nd and Dodge Streets. And Jude, are you presenting, or, Kate? You're up.
Thank you. Jude Beller, Lockwood Development, 12910 Pierce Street, on behalf of KJ Crossroads Ventures, the applicant. Thank you for your time. It's been maybe eight months since I've been back in front of you in the preliminary plat, but today I thought we would show you just a little bit of a summary of what has changed in the last eight months, and then happy to answer any questions about the final plat and zoning that we're requesting. So, high level, pretty much all of the right-of-ways have stayed the same since the last time we've been in front of you. Been a couple of location changes of some buildings along Dodge Street that I'll point out, but from a high level, still a million nine square feet, about 4,800 parking stalls, of which about 78% of those are in a structured environment, 8% are on-street, and 7% in a surface lot. We still have, here shaded in blue, fitness and entertainment, office, senior family, multifamily, retail on first floor with multifamily above, retail in the center corridor, as well as retail on the first floor with a hotel above, and office. All these buildings in front are single-story retail buildings. There's a lot to digest in all of this. It's about 40% housing units, 30% office, and 30% retail, hotel, entertainment, fitness space. So true mixed-use, live, work, play type of arrangement. The right-of-ways still count for about 10 acres of the site, so we had 40 acres. We've given up 10 to the public for streets and sidewalks. That's about 25% of the site. It's also about 20% of the overall budget. Budget still remains 550 to 750, $575 million. We've got about two and a, two and a half acres of plaza spaces that are depicted here, and about three miles of new sidewalks throughout this. Plat, our mixed-use plan, might be better if I stick on the site plan for just a real quick summary. The main change that we've made since the preliminary plat has to do with the space here in front. We used to have a congregation's of buildings, were surrounded by a plaza, excuse me, internal to a parking, plaza with parking here and parking back here. We've opened that up, slid the buildings along Dodge Street in coordination with discussions with Planning Department, as well as increased a couple more surface stalls in here, as well as a couple more square feet for retail here. We've also agreed through discussions with Planning and Public Works that we would eliminate curb cuts that used to be in this location and put a landscape buffer there. We've had, since the last time we were in front of you, we've had 14 meetings with Planning Department as well as Public Works Department to go through all of this exercise and prepared for our final plat supplemental in May, and we've had a few more meetings since then, but happy to answer any questions. I appreciate your attention and request your approval. Thank you.
Any other proponents wishing to speak? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Come on forward, give your name and address, please.
Hi, I am Michaela Kavanaugh, 824 North 74th Avenue. I'm used to having the neutral option, so I'm a gentle opponent. I, I live in the neighborhood. I'm also a representative in the state legislature for the neighborhood, and my neighbors have expressed their concerns to me, and so I wanted to bring some of them forward today. They're not directly related to the development. The Lockwood Development has been very gracious in talking with the people in my neighborhood about their concerns. It's more about the traffic, once we get to the edge of the development at 74th and Cass. The exhibit here shows you the 1 and 2, the high-density housing, which is very exciting. As we all know, Omaha needs more high-density housing. However, that exit on 74th is realigned to the neighborhood. Currently, if you go to Crossroads Mall, that street is kind of a zigzag. And so because of that realignment, the neighborhood has expressed some concerns over increased traffic coming into the neighborhood, and they've expressed a lot of concerns to the planning department about those concerns, and I'm just here to express that they don't feel like they've been fully addressed. There are at least 11 families between Cass and Western with children under the age of 10, so there's a lot of kids playing in the streets there, and the, they're moved, the street is turning over, so there's a lot more families moving into the neighborhood. We also have a home with adults with intellectual and developmental disabilities, and if you ever have the privilege of coming through our street, sometimes the gentlemen that live there run into the street, and it's very sudden, and you have to be conscientious of driving slowly. Another issue of concern is that there is no plan as of yet that we've been informed of for how the light signals are going to work, and we would just like, before approval is given to the traffic flow from 74th Avenue between Cass and Western, that there is more thought and presentation given to the traffic flow from there. And as far as we know, there's not been a sufficient study done, because there can't be, because we don't have the apartment buildings there, and we don't have the street realigned, so you can't say how much traffic increase we're going to have through there. So just wanted to express those concerns to everyone today. And again, I'd like to say we're very excited to have the Crossroads Development and Lockwood. It's just our concerns about the traffic.
Great, thank you, Kayla. Any other opponents wishing to speak? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. Jude, did you want to come up and address her concerns, or Ryan Ha, we can always call Ryan from the...
And Jude, can I ask, what is 74th running to north? North, does it run into Creighton Prep? Like if you're, what's the furthest north you can take 74th?
That might be a better question. Does that go all the way up to Prep, straight?
Just a second, Jude, I'm sorry, give your name and address.
Sorry, Jude Beller, Lockwood Development, 12910 Pierce, Omaha.
I guess I'm just wondering, Senator Kavanaugh, what the neighborhood or what folks are saying, I'm just trying to think, where would someone be going north or northeast, why they would take 74th instead of going 7... take 74th instead of going 72nd, and then, I guess I'm just trying to think that through, why would someone would do that?
It goes, it goes up to...
Teeing into Creighton Prep, that doesn't really make a lot of sense, but I don't know.
That might be a better question for our traffic engineers or for Ryan in terms of what behavior causes you to want to go from crossroads north through the neighborhood if there was a quicker way to get home or get to another thoroughfare, but we're surrounded by three arterials, so I think they can get you everywhere they go, Ryan. Do you want to, it might be good for just context, as Ryan comes up, I think what is being discussed is this intersection here at 74th Avenue and Cass, we have straightened that out pursuant to our plan. As it does sit today, it does not straight through, so in working with Plan, Public Works Department, we have straightened that out pursuant to that request. So...
Ryan, do you want to come, come up and answer the questions?
Ryan Haas with the Public Works Department. I didn't catch the beginning of your question.
It really wasn't a question. I was just, I mean, I, it really is a question about behaviors. I, my question was, where does 74th, if you're driving north, run into, and it sounds like it's Creighton Prep, and I was just wondering aloud, if someone were trying to go north or northeast, what would drive them to take that, literally, versus going, taking a right to 72nd and then going north?
And that's always the question, and we do get those types of concerns. Like, for example, the Sterling Bridge, we had people on the west side concerned about people crossing 132nd and then taking a shortcut through their neighborhood. If there's no time savings to be offered, then, then the outcome is that the cut-through traffic that, that is a concern of neighbors, that doesn't end up manifesting itself. So we get those concerns up front. We never hear it on the back end after the project is built. Now, that's not to say that, we certainly would expect to see maybe a rerouting of, of traffic patterns in the neighborhood. Crossroads, after this development is constructed, will be, will generate a lot more traffic from the neighborhood, a lot of demand from the neighborhood to go to crossroads, which currently isn't there. Maybe was there in the past, and people have gotten accustomed to what is there now as far as the number of neighborhood trips using neighborhood streets to access Cass Street at 74th Avenue. So we certainly would expect to see that, and that, that's something that fits in with the master plan and how the city grows as far as, grows and redevelops as far as being able to handle local trips locally and cross and minimize the length of trips that are forced out onto the major streets.
Would you address the aligning of 74th Avenue?
Yeah, right now, it's an offset T-intersection. That, that causes problems. We, we always try to avoid setting, we do avoid setting those up on, on new developments. We, sometimes at great expense, go back and remove them when they, when they do exist. If you're familiar with 84th and Indian Hills Drive and Dodge Street there over by Children's, we've got a, a multimillion-dollar project to correct that offset T-condition. The issue is, you can run them efficiently and somewhat efficiently, you can run them somewhat safely, but not both. And, and so that, because of that, it's just not a design we support anymore. And so we had the opportunity to work with a developer with their streets to get both legs of the intersection to line up. That doesn't in and of itself drive traffic that would otherwise use Cass Street and 72nd to go generally north, basically non-residents. Just the fact that they line up isn't, isn't still, that fact isn't going to drive the traffic through the neighborhood that, that the neighbors are concerned with.
Hey, Ryan, I think one of the questions they had from the neighborhood was what the light sequencing would be, or...
And, and that's a good question, and, and anytime you have a redevelopment like this, that's going to be kind of a, a process that changes over time as far as evaluating what the, what the, as it comes online, we'll go out and count after it's built, and we will time the signals to match up what the demand is at that time. Then several years will pass as more development builds, you know, this isn't going to come online all at once. It's going to build slowly over time. We, we certainly have the means, and it's done on a request basis. We go out all the time and count, do traffic counts to, to gauge the traffic demand, and then we set the traffic signal timing accordingly to, to maximize the efficiency at the intersection.
Ryan, can you talk about traffic calming devices and what options exist and what might trigger that for the city on that street?
Yeah, 74th Avenue, you know, with the construction, the proposed construction of the Cass Street median to bring Cass Street up to standards, that will reroute some of the traffic, some of the neighborhood trips internally as it circulates to get in and out of Cass Street relative to what exists today. So that, that would result in a, a small increase in volumes on 74th Avenue, and some of the, the concern with that that have been expressed by the neighbors is that, the concern that that will drive higher speeds. We have counted the, and measured the speeds right now. We don't quite meet the thresholds. We don't meet the threshold for volume, and there's not the threshold for speed, excessive speeds today. But after the, you know, again, like, as with signal timing, we can evaluate it over time after the reconstruction takes place at 74th Avenue and Cass, and as crossroad builds, we can certainly go back, and we've committed this to the neighbors as well, we can go back and, and reevaluate the speeds and volumes at that time. If, if the speed and volume thresholds are met, and if enough signatories, enough neighbors, enough percentage of neighbors sign the petition, then we will go out and construct traffic calming devices.
Remind, has traffic study been completed?
The traffic study review is ongoing, but we have not, the city of Omaha and, and neither party has given final approval to the traffic study.
And, but, we're requiring a traffic study to be done?
That's correct.
Correct. But it's not, I don't see it as part of the recommendations in this, so how important is the traffic study to, to all of this?
It's, we view it as critical. Typically, the, the way the process works is the subdivision agreement won't be reviewed and forwarded, and finalized and forwarded to City Council until the traffic study is finalized. It doesn't always, it's not necessarily common for the final plat to get to this point without a final approved traffic study. We're comfortable with conditional approval of the planning board today, subject to that condition, and continuing to work with the project team to resolve the issues before it goes to City Council.
Yeah, and I've expressed it before, that, you know, the traffic is a concern, obviously, and it is to all of us, I'm sure, to everybody in, in this project, and, but I very much support the project, but I was just curious why it wasn't part of the recommendation. Maybe Eric, you can address.
Yeah, no, that's, it's typical, just to include it with the wording in the final subdivision agreement, so when you get to this point, it's...
Fair enough. Thanks, Ryan.
Just echoing Mike's point, yeah, from our pre-meeting meeting where we were talking about traffic and everything, it is a concern. Great project, great development team. Hoping that you guys can work out, you know, the concerns that you brought forth in that pre-meeting.
Sure.
You know, for that final traffic study, so. Okay. Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you.
I'd close the public hearing. Jude, did you want to add anything to what's...
No, sir.
Okay. Any further comments or questions from the board? Eric?
Yeah, so because it is part of the, the recommendation, I do want to point out there is a, a waiver of a sidewalk on the western edge along 75th Avenue. This was included as a request as part of the preliminary plat. At that time, we had recommended denial, but as part of that continued coordination that Jude had mentioned, due to the grades and, and the unique challenges on that side of the, of the subject site, staff is supportive of that waiver along the western edge of 75th Avenue, so I just wanted to point that out. We anticipate that, you know, west of this site will redevelop. At that time, there'll be opportunity for that sidewalk, but as, as Jude had mentioned, there's, there's definitely connectivity throughout this entire site. I think you said three miles of sidewalks. A few items with the mixed-use development agreement that'll have to be finalized. We are in some conversations about a sidewalk on, as you get closer to the southeast portion of the site, as you approach the target site from 74th Street. So we do have a comment in, in the recommendation report, and we can continue those conversations with the development team. There's some signage specifics in, in the recommendation report, but nothing I need to point out at this time. We think it's a wonderful project. We've, it's, it's been very enjoyable for staff to, you know, to, to have such close coordination. So, you know, on behalf of the, the Planning Department and hopefully, you know, the entire city, just want to say thank you for constructive dialogue to the development team, and we think it's been a great collaborative effort. So just want to throw that out there. Unless you have any questions specifically for me, staff recommends approval of the rezoning from R1, R8, LC, and GC to GC and MU, subject to submittal of five copies of an acceptable mixed-use development agreement, approval of the repeal of the MCC overlay district from a portion of the site, approval of the expansion of the MCC overlay district for a portion of the site, approval of the expansion of the ACI-2PL overlay district for a portion of the site, approval of a waiver to Section 5399 sidewalks along the western edge of 75th Avenue, and approval of the final plat subject to the conditions of preliminary plat approval and submittal of a final acceptable subdivision agreement prior to forwarding to City Council. If you so wish, you can make a recommendation as stated in the recommendation report.
Do we have a motion?
I'll move approval of the rezoning from R1, R8, LC, and GC, and MU, subject to submittal of five copies of, of an acceptable mixed-use development agreement, and approval of the repeal of the MCC overlay district from a portion of that, of the site, approval of the expansion of the MCC overlay district for a portion of the site, and approval of the expansion of the ACI-1-2-2PL overlay district for a portion of the site, and approval of the waiver to Section 5399 sidewalks along the western edge of 75th Avenue, and approval of the final plat subject to the conditions of the preliminary plat approval and a submittal of an acceptable final subdivision agreement prior to forwarding the request to City Council.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you record the vote?
Morris?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Agenda item number 20, case C-10-21-253. Applicant Jose Perez, request rezoning from R435 to R5, location 4810 South 15th Street. Say what? Hold on. Is the applicant here? Doesn't appear that the applicant's here. Okay, are there any other proponents that wish to speak? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Additional comments or questions from the board? Eric?
I guess I will be the opponent. Staff is recommending denial of this rezoning. The neighborhood as a whole is R435. Now, we said multiple times that R5 is low-density residential, and we acknowledge that. However, based on the applicant's request to rezone this in order to construct a duplex, the property is not large enough to construct duplex with the regulations set forth in R5. It requires, the R5 district requires a 60-foot wide lot as well as a 6,000-square-foot lot, which this site is not meeting. I believe it's 40 feet in width and 5,200 square feet in, in size. So even if there was a rezoning to R5, the applicant would need to seek waivers from the Zoning Board of Appeals. We think in this circumstance, it's just best to recommend denial. So our staff recommendation is to deny.
All right, do we have a motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you please record the vote?
Pete?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved to deny.
Agenda item number 26, case C-7-19-84. Applicant Darwin Rhode, request: Approval of major amendment to the conditional use permit to allow secondary education facility in the R4 district. Property is located within an MCC overlay district. Location: Northeast of 60th and L Street. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Good afternoon. I'm Darwin Rhodey, Director of Facilities for Omaha Public Schools, 4041 North 72nd Street, Omaha. Here to answer any questions concerning the signage request.
I apologize for mispronouncing your last name.
Thank you.
All right. All right, any other proponents that wish to speak? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Additional comments or questions from the board? Eric?
So Darwin, if I could have you come up, so in our recommendation report, we talked about a lot of things, some of the signs you can't see, and we come up with the overall budget being requested, 682. You are aware that staff's recommending to remove the Buena Vista lettering on the actual bison at the intersection?
We have no objection to that.
Okay, okay. I just wanted to make sure you were aware. So we, we think that, that's the best solution with large civic sites such as this with high school in a residential zone. Obviously, the, what the zoning code lays out for allowed signage budget is, is not sufficient, and something that we're going to be looking at moving forward. We felt just reducing, you know, the lettering on those actual bison, so we don't have to count those as signage, i- is the best approach, and so that is what we are recommending, which would take that down to about 313 square feet.
Yeah.
So staff is recommending approval of the major amendment to the conditional use permit, subject to the six conditions in the recommendation report. This will need to go to the Zoning Board of Appeals with your support for, to increase that signage.
Thank you, Eric. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve major amendment to the conditional use permit, subject to the six conditions in the staff report.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you please record the vote?
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Agenda item, thank you, Darwin.
Thank you.
Agenda item number 27, case C-7-18-73. Applicant, city of Omaha, request: Approval of a major amendment to the conditional use permit to allow safety services in the CC district. Location: 20924 Cumberland Drive. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Hi, Mike Heisman, Facilities Management, Public Works, here to discuss the, we, when we went to Urban Designer Review Board early on in this process, we had a chain-link fence in there. After discussion with Judy Buescher, the neighbor to the west, we decided upon a seven-foot-high solid fence, and as the process went going, we forgot to follow up with a fence permit, so we missed it, so we're requesting here to have the fence stay as is. And I'm here for any other questions.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Any other proponents? Seeing none, Clancy, are you coming up?
Clancy Peterson, I'm here on behalf of the surrounding property owners. They support the approval of this conditional use permit. They'd like the fence to stay the same.
Okay, thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Comments or questions from the board?
Yeah, so just to add on what, what Mike had said, you know, I think really, due to the nature of this facility being a police precinct and, you know, the obvious security need, you know, we are also supportive of this privacy fence, and so we are looking for your support in following up with the ZBA to get that, the waiver to formalize what is already in place for this site. So staff recommends approval of major amendment to the conditional use permit, subject to the five conditions in the recommendation report.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve the major amendment to the conditional use permit, subject to the five following conditions.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you record the vote?
Rosacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
And agenda item number 28, case C-14-21-262. Applicant, Planning Department, on behalf of the city of Omaha, request approval of the vacation, vacation of a portion of Military Road right-of-way located south of the intersection of Blair High and Military Roads. Are you the applicant?
Yes, so I'll give the introduction. So yeah, this request, this request to vacate a segment of, of city right-of-way, just a, just a shade under 10,000 square feet, just off of Blair High Road on the south side of Military Road. You know, we received this request. As you can see with the site plan and the aerial photo, this area has been used privately for quite some time, so the vacation of right-of-way would be appropriate to, in order to, you know, officially get this in the hands of, of the, of a private ownership. We are supportive of the vacation requests, subject to certain conditions, and I'll go through those briefly. According to the city's driveway regulations, only one access is allowed on the property, so the northern access of the proposed vacation must be closed, and the approach must be removed and replaced with curb and sidewalk. Second, there is storm and sanitary sewer easement that must be maintained... Second, there is storm and sanitary sewer easement that must be maintained for access to drainage structures, the creek embankment to the east, and the bridge that is located to the east as well. There will be no building improvements, grading, or fill materials can be placed over the easement unless previously approved by the city. And parking, surfacing is allowed, but no trees can be placed in the easement area. That's all I have at this time, and I, you know, just ask if I can respond and give the official recommendation report later.
I'll follow it. Okay, are there any other proponents wishing to speak? Nope, you don't want to? Okay. Oh, any, okay, seeing none, are there any opponents? Okay, come on. Sorry, I thought you were talking to be a proponent. I'm sorry.
My name is Steve Probst. Eighty-six, twenty-five Military Road. As I understand, the vacation of this property would go to an adjacent owner. I also am an adjacent landowner right on the very corner of that property, albeit less square feet of frontage. I have been paying rent on that property for twenty-four years and maintaining the property for twenty-four years. I fenced it, gated it, and used it for the last twenty-four years. So don't know how vacation works and to what extent adjacent property owner goes. But as far as, I know there's no statute of limitations or anything like that, but I have been using it and paying rent on it to the tune of, you know, several tens of thousands of dollars the last twenty-four years. So.
Do you have a plan with you, Steve?
Well, just the drawing that you probably have.
Yep, we could put that up. Let me get, what exactly is it that you want, Steve?
Well, I'm just curious, when, when it is vacated, what adjacent landowner would, would get that?
Which property is yours, Steve?
Mine is just, just to the west. Yeah, sure. So this property right here is mine?
That's what you own?
Yes.
Northwest Feeds?
Yeah. My business is Northwest Feeding Grain Company. And so we, like I say, square footage-wise, obviously their square footage is more than mine. It's just through the use and the paying of rent the last twenty-four years, I didn't know if I had any.
Yeah, Dave asked, who are you paying your rent to?
To, well, the Lambert family is the people that own. And I'm sure they're the folks that have been, that have, that have asked for the vacation of it. But it's just kind of an odd, odd situation, and I assumed they owned it the whole time. So that's why I was paying rent to them for the last twenty-four years. And now I find out that they don't own it.
Are those trucks within the, the subject vacated area, are those yours?
Yes.
Okay.
Now, we have been, we've rented more than just the outlined area. It goes back just a little bit into this area, too. So it's kind of a, an odd piece, but, and, and we've had a good relationship with our neighbors. The, the two gentlemen that initially owned it have both passed away. Their sons and cousins, and they, they all are taking care of it now and are doing some, some work there. But I, I, I parked things on it and have for, like I say, since nineteen ninety-seven. So didn't know what, to what extent adjacent property owners, you know, extends to. So I, I, I guess it's a question more than a.
Yeah, well, and if, if I could have a moment, the city would not support vacating this right-of-way to any other property besides the one that's being requested that's adjacent. I, I know there's a very point of the tip that's touching Steve's property, but we would not support that vacation to, to his property, unfortunately, even though he has been renting and using it. So that would, that would be our position.
Is that because it's such a small portion?
Yeah, I would not say that's adjacent.
Okay. Just speak.
Go ahead, Sidney, I'm sorry.
What recourse, though, could he take from paying years of rent to an assumed property owner that doesn't own the property?
You know, I, I would say that'd be a, a civil matter. I mean, he's been getting the benefit of, of using city-owned land. You know, it's not, we're not out, you know, trying to, trying to bust him. But obviously, we've had a request that we're aware of. And I mean, if this vacation doesn't go through, it might be something we have to look into to make sure the improvements are, are taken off the city land. So.
So adjacent does have something to do with the amount of feet involved?
I'm going to look at law. I would assume that, Jennifer, I would, I don't know if you have any input on the matter, but when I would look at that, I would say that's not adjacent.
Well, adjacent traditionally means adjacent to the lot line. And so, for example, within a city street, you go half and half to either side of the street to the adjacent property owner. The only piece that would be adjacent, from what I can see on what I'm pulling out, is this point that comes down here, which is not only adjacent to Mr. Probst's property, but is still also adjacent to the neighboring property owner. So I, I don't, and even if you were to give some portion of the property, the adjacency would just go to that portion that touches. So you might get five inches, six inches, maybe.
Okay.
And the other challenge, I assume for you, is you're, you're probably accessing that land from that curb cut off of that street, right?
Yeah, there's two curb cuts right here. So from what you said, this one will go away?
Yep.
When you say north, it's kind of on the curve, so I didn't know what.
That's correct, yep, the one on the curve there closest to, to the highway.
And that one currently we have locked, and it's not being used anyway. We, we only use this one, so, so that's the one that would be.
Well, it seems to me as, as if you do, or if this does indeed pass and they acquire the property, the use that you've had and the agreement you'd have with them over these last years could still be maintained, I would think. Or you might be able to negotiate with them to, and look, I put, I bought this thing.
Yeah.
How about if you deed it over to me?
Yeah, yeah.
Have you had a conversation with, with them at all?
Uh, there's some conversation of what they want to do with the property. And I have offered to, to purchase that whole front corner from them, and they have not decided, so.
Are they, are they interested in, in, in that?
They, they're still having a conversation between, there's several family members involved, so.
Yeah.
Does the city have any obligation to not do business with a person or entity that's vacation or otherwise is doing something that could be illegal?
Yeah, we could choose not to vacate or sell this land, basically. And we could require the improvements taken off now. Because Steve here is, is the one, you know, he's, he's renting the space, basically, from the adjacent property owner. You know, but yeah, I mean, they're, I think cleaning up the matter is a good situation. Obviously, it's gone on a long time.
Steve, you weren't just, you weren't just renting that corner?
Jennifer, would you like to?
You, you were renting more than just that space?
Correct.
Okay.
I think Jennifer with Law Department would like to say something.
We, although it's something that can be considered, we generally counsel, city council planning board, to stay out of civil, civil matters so that we don't want to be in a position of, you know, making sort of decision or adjudicating anyone's rights when it's not really our place to do so. We can always take in the history of interactions with the city or past behavior in deciding to do something, but I generally caution against making decisions that are more of a civil matter.
How much more ground have you been leasing and, or getting as a part of your lease?
I, I'd say the, the little triangle there is maybe forty percent of the total.
Forty percent?
Of the total, because we also rent some other area clear on the south end of this, too. But, you know.
So I guess to, to Sidney's question, if we were to do anything like that, the only one who would really get penalized would be him.
Would be me, yeah.
I think there may be another opponent also. Oh, you were raising your hand?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Well, he'll have to.
Just wait, yeah. Any other questions for Steve?
Thank you, Steve.
Sure.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Even though we had a, a proponents and you weren't, were you here or?
I was here, but I didn't.
That's all right, come on forward. Give your name and address, please.
Travis Knutson, twenty-six, forty, North Eighty-first Street. I, I acquired this with my brother and another partner. We bought my cousins out. My other cousin inherited it from my uncle. I walked this property last year with Steve, and that's when he told us, we don't own it. And I said, okay. That's when we put in for, uh, put in place to try to acquire it from the city. And at that time, Steve said that I didn't own it, and so we did what we did there. And he asked me if he could keep his vehicle still on there. I said, well, we don't own it. I can't tell you what you can keep on there, or you can't. Also, when he says rent, he rents quite a bit of my property behind his place. So the forty percent's not really forty percent. And so I guess I do have pictures of that. So that's all his there. We had it surveyed. Did all these, back of these containers sit on my land, too? So all that's his right there.
All those containers belong to Steve?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
So part of that's on my land. All those buildings are sitting on my land. That's sitting up front there. And what else we got? So I believe he parks stuff there, and I don't know, since both my uncles are passed away, I can't ask them any questions. But I believe their amount that was set, he pays five hundred dollars. I just rented a place for a bus for seventy-five dollars a month. So he, he takes up quite, he takes up quite a bit more land than anybody else on my property, and he pays probably less than anybody. So, and at that day, when we met, I said, like I told him, I said, I'm not renting you that. That's the city's. Or at the time, it was the state or the city or the county. It was a long time to get to this point to figure out who actually owned this land. So I don't think we were taking advantage of him. I don't think my uncles were taking advantage of him. I just think this came up, and it was a way that he was going to get what.
You're just saying that, okay, your uncles, or you, you rented property, and Steve just assumed that went with, went with the rental of the, and parked vehicles there?
Yeah, I'm not really sure, I'm not really sure what happened there. I, I, I'm just, uh, the amount of land that he has of rent from us, that little bit, if you, this is what he parks on that, let's say. So that's what's on that, that, half of that semi sitting on my land, and that's the rest of the land right there. That supposedly I'm renting, or he's renting from us, which he's not. It's the city's. My, my rent value was not, I didn't care about that. And so that wasn't part of it. And I told him the first time I met Steve, that wasn't part of what I was renting him. It's everything else. And, you know, as we're sitting here, he just pulls up on our land. He puts stuff on our land. He doesn't ask, do I have to pay you more? Do I have to pay you less? He parks it wherever he wants. As of right now, we're trying to clean the property up, so it's not like it was a big push on our point. We're not to the point where we're ready to develop it completely. So, you know, that's how we sat with it. So, but I, you know, as I sat there, it sounded like we were taking advantage of him, and I don't think that we're taking advantage of him.
Okay.
Can I break, Steve?
Sure. I'm going to close the public hearing. Go ahead, Mike, if you want.
Steve, would you mind?
Sure.
Name and address again, for the record.
Steve Probst, eighty-six, twenty-five Military.
So Steve, do you own any of that land that your business is operating on? Or is it strictly a rental arrangement?
I own all of my land.
You own all, but you're renting some of the land?
I, I rent the adjacent piece from these guys, yeah.
Okay, but your business itself?
Yeah.
Northwest Feeds, is that what it is?
Yeah, yeah.
You own all of that property?
Right.
Okay. And how long is the rental agreement that you have in place?
With them.
With them.
I established it on a handshake with their uncles, and.
Those are no term?
For no term. It was just, you know, they would let us do it. I didn't realize this wasn't theirs till about the last year and a half, maybe?
Two years?
Something like that. So when he says, you know, that I'm, I, I assumed I was paying for that for, okay, twenty-two years. I assumed it was part of it.
So let's, let's just run this out a little bit. So assume that, that, you know, you no longer can utilize that, that land. You have adequate land available to be able to, 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 to put those trailers or other equipment or buildings on your property that you own?
Well, we could, yeah. I mean, when he says we just kind of moved stuff in, I guess I didn't realize, once I owned that area, that I had to specifically state what I was going to do with the property. I mean, what we have setting on there is trucks that we park there. And, you know, that picture that he had wasn't quite accurate because we use it for employee parking as well. All of our employees park over there, and sometimes we have customers park over there. But I asked his cousin prior to moving in, we also sell storage buildings, you know, for backyard storage. And, you know, I asked his cousin if, you know, we could use, you know, that area to put those on there. And, you know, at the same time, I guess I didn't know that there was any restrictions on what we could and couldn't use it for. We were renting that property, and I assumed that that's what we could use it for.
Well, obviously, there's been a turnover in family ownership of the property, and so it'd probably be a great idea if, if you, you can continue to communicate and talk and maybe work out some sort of an arrangement. That would be, that would be what I would recommend you do, but.
Sure. And, and, you know, we started out by, probably for, oh, twenty years or so, we only rented the front. We only started paying rent for the back portion, maybe the last five, six years. So that's something that, and the one uncle was, was still part of the, the operation then, and that's an agreement that he and I came up with. So the front portion was, that's been in place for probably eighteen to twenty years.
Sure.
So, anyway.
Thank you, Steve.
Yeah.
Gotcha. Thanks, Steve. Any other comments, questions? Eric?
Yeah, so I already stated, we're supportive of vacating, you know, and selling this land directly to the parcel to the south. And I had mentioned some of those restrictions earlier. If you have any questions for me, that is fine. But we will recommend approval subject to the seven conditions listed in the recommendation report.
I've got a question. If we, if we vote to vacate that land, does the sale of it have to go to the landowner to the south?
I would say yes.
Okay.
It's, it's a vacation of right-of-way. It's not a disposal of city property. Okay, so if this was a separate platted lot, that's a different matter. There's way of disposing to different properties. But this is a vacation of right-of-way, which goes to the adjacency of landowners.
I forgot that, yeah.
It's not. It's close, but it's not large enough to even be a platted lot. But when you take away, it, it's not going to be allowed access. So there's no option to, to plaid it into its own lot. That's, that's not.
Okay. All right. Any comments, questions? Do we have a motion?
I move approval subject to the seven conditions outlined in the recommendation report.
Second.
Lisa, we have a motion and a second. Will you record the vote, please?
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Mr. Chair? Mr. Chair?
I'm going to vote yes. Steve's a, I do business with Steve and consider him to be kind of a friend, but I don't see any way around it, Steve, so.
Motion approved.
Okay.
I think just an editorial comment, this goes to show why Jennifer's comments make sense. These are adjoining property issues that need to be dealt with yourselves. You know, your neighbors, your friends, you know, the families have been associated for a long time. And it sounds like with the changing of generations, that agreement needs to be reexamined and come to a new agreement. So anyway, good luck to both of you.
Thanks for coming down. Travis, Steve. Minutes from the August meeting, the pre-minutes, the pre-meeting minutes, and the public meeting minutes. Do we have a motion?
A motion to approve pre-meeting minutes and the public meeting minutes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you record the vote, please?
Moore?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Franklin? One or the other? Okay. Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Abstain.
Motion approved.
Do we have a motion for adjournment?
Motion adjourned.
Second.
Lisa, will you record the vote, please?
Pate?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Franklin? Morris?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved, adjourned 3:01 PM.
Thanks for that.